Good evening. I'd like to call the Winnipeg Town Council meeting to order. Today is December the 11th, 2023, and it's approximately 6:05. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Councilman Tony Moore, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I mean...
Power heads, please. A heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for your many, many blessings. Thank you for these newly elected people to turn to board tonight. Thank you for the crowd that's here to support them. Walk with us, talk with us, give us vision, O Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If everyone could please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. I know we do have a lot on the agenda and a grand occasion for, for individuals that have won an election to be sworn in tonight. Before that, I'd like to recognize some people that are here. We do have with us tonight our council, I mean, our Chair of the Pitt County Council, County Commissioner, Mr. Mark Smith, is with us tonight. We also have Judge Griffin, who is with us tonight. He, I'm sorry, Ms. Heath, Judge Heath, I apologize, Ms. Heath. And also, we have Judge DeSoto, he's out in the back there. And also, we have Magistrate Ms. Jordan that's here. And I don't know if Senator Candace Smith is here, will be here also. And Mayor Don Hardy, the Mayor of Kinston, is with us tonight. And if there's anyone else that I missed, I do apologize. Next up is the approval of agenda, of the agenda. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, we do have a few changes. We do have only one introduction under employees for this evening. If you will turn over to the second page, you will see that we also added one other agenda item, and that is just a quick update on the cemetery expansion project. And I believe that's it.
Yes, and also too, I'd like to make a slight change in...
Oh, yes.
...installation of my officers. We're actually going to move Ms. Veronica Robson up to the one spot, okay? And we're going to move Ms. Hawkins down in the four, four spot. So basically, just moving Ms. Hawkins to the back of it, okay? All right. That's the only changes. All right. Okay, so can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with the changes, with the said changes. A motion made by Councilman Tony Moore, seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell. Any discussion? With none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Mayor, I have one housekeeping item if I could ask of council and the management team members. In doing some recent minutes, I discovered that I cannot hear some of you on the video. And so, I would ask everyone either at your seats or as you're up at the podium to please speak loudly and, don't yell, but loudly and into the microphone because there are some of you I can't hear at all. Thank you.
Duly noted.
The board in.
Okay, next up is introduction of employees. And we asked Mr. Cliff with Public Works to come today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're pleased, this is our newest employee with Public Works, Mr. Chad Skinner. He comes to us from Henderson-Barnhill where he served a little over 25 and a half years. So, he's got a ton of experience in water and sewer, and we're very excited to have him. So, if you'd like to say anything, now's the time. I appreciate it.
I'm just very thankful to be given this opportunity, and I'm thankful for everyone who gave me this opportunity, I hope, and I'm going to try my very best to make everybody proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Skinner, and welcome to the town of Winnipeg. Next up, we have a presentation. Ms. Manning.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have Mr. James Overton here from Carl Rigs and Ingram out of Goldsboro. He's going to present the 2223 fiscal year audit. Each year, we contract out an audit firm to audit our funds to make sure they're accounted for correctly and to ensure that we have all the proper controls in place. The North Carolina General Statute requires each unit of local government to have its accounts audited each year. So, I'll turn that over to him.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe you should have a copy of Mr. Overton's presentation in addition to a copy of the comprehensive financial report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Overton. I'm with Carl Rigs and Ingram CPAs in Goldsboro. I will try to be as brief as possible going over this audit. First, I would like to thank Ms. Parker, Anthony, Jessica, and your entire staff for all the assistance that they gave us on this audit. Your records are in excellent shape, and they've done an outstanding job. Especially, I'd like to thank Jessica, this is her first full year as finance officer, and she did a wonderful job for her first year, okay? If you would, first, I'll go over the big audit package that you have. This is your total report. If you would, turn with me to page 13. On page 13, this is our audit opinion or our report on the audit. If you look in the second paragraph, it says that these financial statements, in our opinion, are presented fairly in all material respects. We didn't find any material errors. We did have a couple of minor adjustments that we passed on. We'll talk about those later, but they were not material. They, and one of them involved leases. There's a new standard on leases. One of the things that y'all lease is one police vehicle. That standard is very complicated, since it's only one vehicle, it's minor. My advice to you in the future is, don't lease anything. Buy it outright.
Oh.
Makes life simpler, okay?
Okay.
All right. Next, if you would, turn with me to page 23. On page 23, this is a income statement, and it's divided into several columns. The first two columns are your governmental activities. That's your general fund and your new fund, the American Rescue Plan grant that you got. The middle two columns, your business activities, that is your enterprise funds, where you charge your citizens for services. That includes electric, water, sewer, and stormwater, okay? And then, the last two columns is the total. If you look, your total revenues in the governmental activities were about 16 million compared to 11 million last year. Your business funds, the total was 13 million compared to 11 million last year. And your grand total revenues, almost 30 million. I'll go over in a little bit the reasons why it kind of went up significantly. Your total expenses this year in the general fund and was just under 11 million compared to 9 million last year. And your electric, water, and sewer revenues total of 12, expenses were 12 million compared to 10 million five last year. So, you see both your revenues and expenses are up. There are two big reasons for this. One, you gave your employees a cost of living increase last year due to the increase in inflation, and they do an excellent job, so that's a well-earned increase, and I'm sure the employees thank you for that. But also, you had a new grant last year, the American Rescue Plan Grant. We'll go over that a little later, but that was a $3 million one-time grant that you won't get again. Look at the bottom of the page, your net income in the governmental activities, 2.5 million, 4 million in the business activities for a total net income of 6.7 million, okay? Flip over to me again to page 27. At the bottom of page 27 is just a summary of your total outstanding debt. Your debt for loans and bonds outstanding in the, next to the last column, 8,492,000. Then, your other long-term liabilities include vacation pay and pension and retiree health insurance. So, your total outstanding long-term liabilities are 15 million, okay? Flip over to me to page, Exhibit 3 on page 34. At the bottom of the page there. At the bottom of the page there, you see the fund balance in your general fund. This is the amount of money after, take all your assets, subtract all your liabilities, this is what you have left, and part of it is restricted. You see the first two items, inventory, that is the amount of supplies you have on hand. That's already spent, so that's not a non-cash asset. Stabilization by state statute, that is the town's accounts receivable. That's money owed to you by the state of North Carolina and by your, from your customers. You can't spend that until you actually collect it, so that's why it's restricted. And then, you have 788,000 in your power bill fund reserve for streets. You have some grant money and asset forfeiture set aside for the police department public safety expenditures, 180,000 in your capital reserve for recreation, and then housing. The town has set aside $100,000 to pay future retiree health insurance. Unfortunately, your future retiree health insurance is 2.6 million, so you've got a ways to go to pay for that, okay? And the town used 600,000 to balance next year's budget. The bottom line, that you unassigned fund balance, that's the amount of fund balance that is not restricted in any way, and the town can spend in any way it so chooses. That's 12.1 million, okay? Next, Exhibit 5 on page 38. This is a statement of budget and actual for your general fund. Your original budget in the first column, final budget in the second column, your actual expenditures in the third column, and the difference in the final column. Your total revenue in the general fund were 11.1 million. Total expenses, 9.7 million. Revenue minus expense, 1.3 million. And then, at the bottom, you had a couple of big transfers. You've got 3 million in the American Rescue Plan. That was transferred to the general fund and used to pay salaries for your employees. That's a one-time thing that you won't get next year, okay? Because of that, the general fund was able to not have to spend that $3 million on salaries. So, the town decided to take that $3 million, transfer it back out of the general fund, and put it in a new stormwater capital project fund. That's going to be used for construction of stormwater and drainage improvements in future years. Have not spent any of it yet, but there are plans to spend it in the future. And then, the other transfer, the electric fund transferred 650,000 to the general fund, and that's kind of been a general practice that y'all have done for the last several years. You're going to get questioned about that from the LGC. They kind of frown upon taking money out of the electric fund and transferring it to the general fund. Now, if you were a member of electorities, there's actually a statutory limit on that, but you're not. But they still will question you about it, and you may consider, you know, maybe amend or transferring a little less because they prefer you keep that money in the electric fund, okay? Page 40, I mean, I'm sorry, 39. 39, Exhibit 6. This is a total of your business funds, your electric, water, and sewer. Just look at the bottom of the page, net position. It's divided into three categories. Investment in fixed assets, that's just the cost of all your electric, water, and sewer lines and equipment and buildings and all of that stuff. So, you can't spend that, it's not cash. The next line is restricted, 17,000. The town received a $25,000 donation from Duke Power to be used to assist low-income citizens with their electric bills. As of June 30th, the town has spent a little over 7,000 of that 25 to assist some of your lower-income citizens. You had 17,000 left at June 30th to help them next year. That's restricted, can't be used for anything else. The last line, unrestricted fund balance, just shows the amount of money in each fund that you can use at your own discretion, okay? Exhibit 7, this is an income statement for your water, sewer, and electric fund. Just look at the bottom of the page. The electric fund had a net loss of 5,200, but that was mainly because they transferred 650 to the general fund. They actually had a profit of 644 before that transfer. Your water and sewer, that, water, 92,000 profit, and sewer, 760. And then, the next last column, stormwater. Your stormwater revenues minus your stormwater expenses left you a, income minus expenses of 197,000, but they, you transferred that $3 million, you saved on salary, to the stormwater fund, so that's why it has a net income of 3.3 million. Most of it being that one-time transfer, okay? Turn to page 48. At the top of page 48, you see a schedule of restricted cash. This is the cash that you had in the bank at June 30th that is set aside for specific purposes. The first one being your power bill, you had 789,000 in cash in power bill fund. Letter of credit, this is money you receive from developers when they're working on projects, and once they complete the projects, they get their money back. And then, the other thing is your restricted grant money, the 100,000 you've set aside for public retiree health insurance, and you have 180,000 in your capital reserve fund for recreation. In the business activities, most of this restricted money is three things. Customer deposits. When a customer leaves and closes their water, sewer, or electric account, they get their deposit back if they paid their bill. Next thing, you also have developer fees, where they have put in water, sewer lines, and electric lines in subdivisions. When they complete those projects, they also get their deposits back. And the last thing you have, well, you don't have it this year, would be USDA loans, but you didn't have any at the end of the year, okay? Turn to page 99. This is your new American Rescue Plan or COVID-19 fund. Last two years, you received a million and a half each year, but last year, you did not spend any of it, you just put it in the bank. So, we recognize that whole 3 million, both years, as revenue this year, and all of it was transferred to the general fund for salaries. So, that money has come, been spent, and is gone now, okay? Last thing, turn to page 117. This page just shows your property taxes receivable for the last 10 years. And you see for the current year, your levy was 4.7 million. You collected 4.7 million, or almost. You had a balanced due on the current year of only 34,000. Your balanced due for the entire 10 years is only 76,000. So, that means that you are doing an excellent job of collecting your outstanding property taxes. And if you look on page 118, this is the summary of your levy. Your total property value in town is 1 billion, 8 million, 979,000. And you collected, at the bottom of that page, 99, over 99% of your property taxes were collected in the first year. And that is outstanding for a small town. The last thing in this report, if you look on page 143. Because you get over 750,000 of federal and state grant money, we're required to include these, this compliance section, which includes our findings on your compliance with federal and state regulations. We only had, we didn't find any non-compliance issues with your federal and state grants. We did find one internal control improvement that you can, you can read on the pages behind it. The thing I will tell you, the local government commission, starting last year, if we have any comments, they will send you a letter asking you what you're going to do to correct those things. You are required to respond to that letter within 45 days. If you have any questions or need any assistance with that response, please call us, but they do have instructions on the website. You got it last year, but you just had one minor comment, and, and they also, they'll question you about that 650,000 transfer from the electric fund and maybe one or two other little things. But overall, y'all did an excellent, outstanding job. Now, that's all for the boring audit report, okay? All right. This is a slide here that hopefully is, makes it a little bit clearer and not quite so boring, okay? This slide here shows your fund balance for the last about 10 years. And you see, as the town has grown, so, so has your fund balance. Your total fund balance was 12 million dollars unassigned. That's 124% of your expenses. So, you have enough money to pay your bills for about a year and three months. So, you're in excellent financial shape. That's a little bit of an improvement from 118 last year, so you should be commended, and the town is in very solid fiscal shape. You've got plenty of money to pay your bills, okay? Next one. This is your total fund balance. That first slide was your unrestricted fund balance. This is your total fund balance, including restricted funds. That is 15.4 million, or 157% of your expenses. So, you have enough in the bank to pay your bills for about a year and a half, okay? This is your revenues in the general fund for the last 10 years. See, this year was 11 million compared to 10 million for last year, okay? And you see the trend has gone up as the town has grown over the last decade. But this is, just shows your budget versus actual. This year, your budget revenues were 11 million, your actual were 11 million one, so you're just a little bit, revenues came in slightly over budget, which is good. Now, the town budgeted 14 million of expenses, but you only spent 9.7 million, so you're well under budget. We did not have any issues this year with departments being over budget, which is commended for y'all doing a good job of controlling your expenses, okay? This is just a graph of your net income in your business funds. In the water fund, net income was 2 million this year compared, I mean, I'm sorry, not net income. Fund balance was 2 million compared to 1,900,000 last year, so it went up just a little bit. Your water and sewer were about the same as last year. The electric fund, you see, from '21 to '22, your fund balance went down from 8 million to 700, 7.7 million. Last year, natural gas prices, which, natural gas is used to create electricity, prices went way up last year, and your cost to buy electricity to sell to your citizens went up over $1 million last year. So, in reaction to that, the town increased the electric rates from 10 cents per kilowatt-hour to 15 cents per kilowatt-hour this year to increase your revenues to offset it. There was no change in the minimum monthly fee, so that stayed the same. And so, your revenue went back up, and you were able to get your electric fund balance back up a little bit. Now, toward the end of the year, those gas LP prices started coming down, and council for its citizens also lowered the electric rates back down by 2.5 cents. So, they're still a little higher than they were two years ago, but you dropped them from that, that high increase of 15, okay? The sewer fund, last year had a negative fund balance. The reason for that was last year, you was, you had two big capital project funds, sewer line rehabilitation and sewer plant rehabilitation. That was money you had spent to fix up those things and repair your sewer lines. Some of those expenses were reimbursed by grants this year, so now it's back up. It went down last year because you were still waiting on the grant fund. But over the two years, it's about the same. And the stormwater fund, of course, went up from 1 million to 4 million entirely due to that transfer from the general fund of the money you saved on salaries with the American Rescue. This is your cash balances at the end of the year. This is your unrestricted cash. You see, it's 13 million in the general fund and 13 million in the proprietary fund, which is electric, water, sewer, and stormwater, okay? And you see, it's significantly up in the stormwater fund. That big increase is that $3 million grant, okay? Power bill, this is the money you get from the state to pave streets. This year, you've got 309,000. The town only spent a little over 25,000 on power bill this year. So, you didn't spend much on repairing streets this year. But I know that the town just issued a contract a couple of months ago to spend about 300,000 on paving streets this coming year. So, your power bill went up from 488,000 to 788,000. But it, next year, you'll get another 300, but you're going to spend that 300 next year. You have five years to spend your power bill money, but you have about two years worth in the bank. Federal and state grants, this is just a summary of your federal and state grants this year. You see the big one, the American Rescue Plan, 3 million, that was used to pay salaries, and then, the money saved with salaries was transferred to the stormwater fund for future stormwater projects. The town received a SAFER grant three years ago to help recruit and pay salaries of firemen. You've got your last payment of 37,000 this year for that grant. So, this year, the town paid almost all of the salaries itself. Next year, you will pay all of it, because that grant decreases each year, and it's done now. And you did get a little bit of grant money from DEQ on those two stormwater sewer projects. In the state grants, you spent only 25,000 on power bill this year of the 300 you received. You also got a little grant of 15,000 to help clean debris out of the streams, and 48,000 from the Department of Public Safety to help protect, protect children from these people on the internet that are out to kidnap or harm children in some way. So, your total federal expenditures, 3.4 million, total state expenditures, 89,000, okay? The town also received 86,000 this year from the Department of Justice from federal, from drug forfeitures. When they, when you, your police department arrests drug dealers and confiscate their money, if they're convicted, the Department of Justice sends some of that money back to you for future. You did not spend any of that this year, so that's set aside, but it is set aside and restricted for the same purposes as next year, okay? This is just a graph of your total fund balance. You see, the biggest part of your fund balance is unrestricted, 12 million dollars. You see, the biggest part of your fund balance is unrestricted, 12 million dollars. This just shows your total revenues. The largest revenue in the general fund, 4.8 million, is your property taxes. Sales and service, that would be your garbage collection and your cemetery revenues. Unrestricted intergovernmental, that's your sales tax and franchise tax. Restricted intergovernmental would be your grant revenue. Okay? The one thing that did go up this year, investment earnings. For the last several years, interest rates have been really low. You've collected almost nothing in interest. Due to inflation, the Federal Reserve raised interest rates substantially. That benefited the town. Your interest income is up considerably over last year. It was 341,000 this year. Okay? General fund expenditures, the largest is public safety, police, fire, and EMS. The next largest would be general government and recreation. Okay? And that is all the stuff I have. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I don't know, reports here. Anybody? Anybody have any questions? Uh, thank you, James.
Yes, sir. Just want to remind you, this is a draft copy.
Right.
Because we are in the last stages of review. The audit has to be done by me, has to be reviewed by my, that's been done. It has to be reviewed by our quality control officer in New Mexico. She's working on her review today, and one other partner, he finished his review. So we are planning to, as soon as we clear one, two little things, and we get a signed management rep letter from Ms. Parker and Ms. Manning, we will be submitting this to the LGC before the end of this year.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Overton.
Mr. Overton, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Pretending to the leasing of the vehicles, you were saying that it would be probable for us to purchase the vehicles and pay for them?
Well, the only difference between buying a vehicle and leasing a vehicle is, when you buy the vehicle, you get title today. Now, the bank may hold it until you pay for it, but the vehicle is in your name and you own it. Okay? When you lease it, they keep the title, and you don't get the title until the end of the lease, and you can usually either turn the vehicle in, or they give it to you and you get the title at the end. Legally, that's only the real difference. There's a new accounting standard that got passed last year. If you lease equipment, you have to treat it just the same as if you bought it. So you may as well just buy it to start with. Okay? It just makes it easier. It is a very complicated standard. Right now, when you lease a vehicle, you just post it to rent expense. Okay? The new standard says you have to capitalize that vehicle, depreciate it, you have to calculate the interest on your lease, take the interest out, and do all kinds of just calculations that make me crazy. Okay?
We don't want to do that.
So it's just simpler to buy it outright, and you prob, you know, you probably come out, as far as your cash, about the same either way. But you'll pay me less money, because I don't have to calculate all of those numbers. Okay?
Okay.
And currently, we only lease one vehicle. There was a strategic reason for that, but I'm sure we can go back and figure out a way to purchase it outright.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overton.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with this wonderful, working town.
Yes, sir. I'm receiving. Jessica?
I would just like to thank Mr. Overton for his presentation tonight, and for all the auditors' hard work in getting this audit completed, and also like to thank the finance staff, as well as all town staff in getting this done. Thank you.
Jessica, you do want, uh, an approval by council to accept the report?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion that we accept the report.
I second it.
I have a motion made by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson, to accept the report from Mr. Overton, the audit report from Mr. Overton. Any discussions? None? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Next up is our public comment section. Do we have any?
I don't think so, sir.
Okay. All right. With that being said, we will move on to open business.
Hello, Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
If you recall, last month, at last month's council meeting, you directed staff to enter negotiation with our electric engineering firm we selected for two items. One was a distribution system valuation, the other was a retail rate review and analysis. We went into those negotiations, went a little back and forth. Tonight, we present to you a request for two different items, which would need to be voted on individually. One is approval of a contract with Argid Power for a $32,975 distribution system valuation, the second being a $13,100 retail rate review project request. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have prior to that.
Do you call that a deal?
I don't know that you ever find a deal when you're working with engineering companies, but they are proud of their work, as they should be. There's tremendous amount of work goes into that.
That's the lowest.
It, it is.
So you need to make separate motion on these two items, correct?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
What's the pleasure?
Make a motion that we accept.
Accept the, the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would be the distribution system valuation.
Correct. Okay. All right. Got a motion made by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Rice, to accept the?
Distribution system valuation.
A system evaluation, distribution system evaluation. Any discussion? If none, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. And the second?
The second one will be the retail rate review and recommendations contract.
Make a motion that we accept the bid for the retail?
Uh, rate, review, and recommendations contract.
That is correct.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilman Rice, to accept the retail recommendation?
Retail rate review recommendation contract.
It's, it's, it's a fool. It is a mouthful.
It is a mouthful, definitely.
All right. Any discussion? With none, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carry. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Terry?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, as you know, our illustrious town clerk, Mr. Harvey, has been out on extended medical leave. We miss him greatly. But as such, I had to catch up on some regular meeting minutes. So first, let me apologize for typos that may exist. But we do have five sets, March 13th, April 10th, May 8th, October 9th, and November 13th. And unless there are large changes, I would ask council to approve those minutes.
Can we actually approve those minutes? I second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Robinson, to accept the minutes from March 13th through November 13th. Any discussion? With none being said, have? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Sure. Thank you so much.
All right. Um, next up, we have comments coming from our members, outgoing members, which assess outgoing members, but they still know that they're still a part of this?
Absolutely.
Board. You know, and once you pass through, you always remember. Uh, we looking forward to having y'all come back and be out here in the audience with us, and maybe give us some more public comments. First of all, I'm gonna start with Councilman Rice, next to me. If you have any comments, Councilman Rice? If you do, can you please?
I've got a long comment. I'll keep it brief. But I wanted to take this moment to say that these past two years, being on the town council, with all of you, has been a lot of fun and very entertaining. The support you gave, gave me when I first came on board was wonderful. The time I have spent has been great. I wish Lisa and Chantel best of luck.
Uh, Tony?
It's been an honor to serve this, on this board, and it's, enjoy the time. Just one comment, the board is only as good as the staff you have that serve, and you've got a heck of a staff. And my prayers are to each one of you, to continue to do the job that you do for the town of Winnebago. I'm proud to have you, um, our workforce, and make us look, looking good every day. Thank you.
And with that being said, for Paul, of course, I campaigned right beside Paul when I was running for mayor, got a chance to know Paul. We might be from, on different spectums, um, aside, but me and Paul had a great relationship. We was able to talk and talk things out, and, you know, and I appreciate that, Paul. I appreciate you serving, stepping up to serve. For Tony, me and Tony, we always butt heads, but only thing I know is Tony has a heart for this town of Winnebago. And, you know, and I, I applaud you for that, Tony. You always have Winnebago first and foremost. And, you know, like I said, we butt heads, but I think at the end of the day, I appreciate you. Yeah. So Godspeed to both of you. May you enjoy what you do from here on out. But yes, no, you're still welcome here. What we're gonna do now is, we're gonna go into closed session, and then we're gonna come back out of closed session, and we're gonna take a short break and get ready for our installation. But while we're in closed session, y'all feel free to relax a little bit. We're gonna come back out and go back into open session to do a formulary vote, and then we're, actually, I'm sorry, then we'll go back and, we'll go to shorts. A little short break.
Yes.
All right. With that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We need a vote to go into closed session, we're wanting a closed session, our closed session statute, to discuss the acquisition of real property.
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Okay. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Dr. Brandon Harrell, that we go into closed session. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Go into closed session. We'd be right. All opposed, go into closed session would be right.
Oh, yeah. That's you.
You got the vote. Tony, you got the vote.
Right.
Spread out all in your...
If you don't get closer out, I'll be so disappointed.
Could've get a motion to go back into... I mean, oh, we're back from closed session.
All right, Anthony?
With that being said, item one in closed session was the McGlaughorn easement offer. We were looking for a motion from the town council to accept the offer made by McGlaughorn.
I second.
Have a motion on the floor. Motion made by Councilman Moye... Moore, second by Councilman Moye to accept the offer on easement on the McGlaughorn property. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Next one is...
Next item was the Piedmont Natural Gas Encroachment Agreement. And this agreement is on Old Tower Road, south side of town, where the Town of Werners Easement intersects with Piedmont Natural Gas.
Is that Michael Anthony? Sorry. There you go.
There you go.
So, again, there was no calls to the town for this encroachment agreement. We need a motion to enter into agreement with Piedmont.
So, vote.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Moye, second by Dr. Harrell. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
The final item we need assistance from on the council is the sale of... Permanent sale of land, so we need to... This one's gonna get... This one's gonna get fun. All right, so we need to declare the land surplus. This is a sale of land to NCDOT for the Old Tower Road widening project, and so we'll need to declare the land surplus and then authorize the mayor as a signer and approve the offer of $3,925 from NCDOT for the purchase of all three permanent...
That's correct.
Purchase and temporary construction easement.
That's pretty good.
That's good. You got it, Anthony.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
A mouthful here. NCDOT land easement purchased for Old Tower widening and then to declare the land surplus and then be approved by me. Correct.
Yes. Authorize you to sign any documents. The purchase price is $3,925.
Okay. The motion was made by Councilman Moye, second by Councilman Moore. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next up, we're gonna move into our installation of our new town officials, but before we do that, I also to... Like to recognize some guests that just came in. We have the mayor of Robinsonville, Ms. Tina Brown, in the back. We had the mayor of Palmer Lee, Jerry, back there. We have the mayor of Lewiston, Woodville, Ms. Chris Corden, and we have Senator Smith. I think she popped up there, Senator Smith. And if anybody else that I missed, charge to my heart, but also Don. Don, I had called him earlier, but he's in here now, the mayor of Kinston. So, again, thank you all for coming. Appreciate you. Well, what we're gonna do now, first, we're gonna call Ms. Veronica Robinson and Honorable Cheryl Jordan, Chief Magister of Pitt County. If y'all could step to the front, please.
And I'm moving. Getting out of the way. My two granddaughters.
Next up, we're gonna have councilwoman, Dr. Elect. Brandy Harrell. She'll be sworn in by the Honorable Elizabeth Heath, Chief District Court Judge of the Eighth District, District.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I am Brandy Harrell. I solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent there is, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office, the duties of my office, as town councilwoman, so help me God. So help me God.
All right. Next up, we have, I mean, newly elected councilwoman, Lisa Smith will be sworn in by the Honorable W. Bryan D. De Soto, District Court Judge.
I have a family, I have my son, my daughter, my family, and also my...
Next up, we have newly elected Chantel Hawkins be sworn in by the Honorable Kenny Smith, North Carolina Senator.
I, Chantel Hawkins, in the thousands say, I solemnly swear that I will support and maintain, that I will support and maintain, the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent there is, and that I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge, the duties of my office, the duties of my office, as town councilwoman, so help me God. So help me God.
Let's give everybody a big hand. These are newly elected accounts, council, and right now, we're gonna take a little short, about a 10-minute break, so if they wanna come up and take some pictures with their family right quick, they're more than welcome to do that, and if I could ask all my mayor friends if they would meet me over by this podium, so we can make sure we get a picture also. Okay? All right. Thank you. So, we're gonna take a little 10-minute breaks, and we'll be right back. So we're gonna take a little ten-minute breaks and, uh, we'll be right back. All right.
I didn't know where you were. My goodness.
All right. Okay, uh, we're gonna resume our meeting. Before we resume our meeting, um, the next appointment is, the appointment of Mayor Pro Tim, um, I'd just like to say-
Mayor, if I could, we need to vote to excuse Ms. Robinson.
That's right, okay. Uh, before we get to that, uh, Ms. Robinson had to leave us due to a family emergency. So we need to, uh, do a vote to excuse her.
Excuse her, okay. Need a motion.
Need a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, excuse Ms. Robinson due to family, a family emergency. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Council Doctor, Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell, second by Councilwoman Lisa Smith, uh, to, um, release Ms. Robinson due to a family emergency. Uh, any discussion? If none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Now. Get into, okay. The, uh, appointment of Mayor, uh, of Mayor Pro Tim, um, like I was gonna say, um, my recommendation is that we kinda look at, I said my recommendation, not the board, my recommendation is that we look at appointing the person to add the most votes, but I know it's not in our charter, I just said mine's. But King is going to explain, and that will be Dr. Harrell, that my recommendation. But King is gonna explain how we're gonna go through this procedure. Sir?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute and also pursuant to your rules of, um, your Policy and Procedures Manual, Rule Number Three, um, at the organizational meeting, which is the, this meeting tonight, a- after you, uh, the elected people are sworn in, you, uh, appoint a Mayor Pro Tim. And pursuant to your rule, um, the procedure to follow is the nomination process. So, um, you will not, we will not take motions, we'll take nominations, the mayor will. So he'll open the floor up to nominations. Anybody and everybody can nominate somebody. Um, once the nominations are finished, he'll close the floor to nominations and then we'll take a vote. Everybody gets one vote, uh, because there's only one office being filled that would give me the Mayor Pro Tim. Um, Mayor, I think that's that. Um, any questions for me? Be glad to answer with the council.
Okay, any questions before I open the nomination, um, for Mayor Pro Tim? Is there any question, anybody have, everybody has, are they understanding of what the attorney said before we move forward? With that being said, I open the floor for nominations for Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Johnny Moy for Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to nominate myself, Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell for Mayor Pro Tim for this term.
Do we have any more motion, I mean, uh, nominations, town motions? With that being s- said, I close the nominations, okay? All right, all right. And what we do, we go in reverse order of the names, okay? All right. And all in favor are Dr. Brandy Harrell as Mayor Pro Tim, raise their right hand. Got two.
Got two, Mayor.
All right, next is all in favor of Councilman Moy, raise their right hand. We have two.
We have a tie vote, Mayor.
Have a tie vote.
Mayor gets to break the tie, all right?
Before you do that, can I, do I have a question? My, my question was, and still is, I was thinking about what you just stated, that the highest voter should be the one to be elected. What about the one that was elected in the prior election? Does that count? Uh, we went back and checked and see exactly what was the final results on the last election. Because I didn't have the rung this time because I had, I have two more years left on my tenure. Could we go back and check that so you can make your decision, because your decision is based on the one who has the most votes?
Uh, it's up to me now. Um, actually, my decision is not based on that. My decision is gonna be based on breaking this tie. Uh, it doesn't matter, uh, what, I just, I just made a statement. And the statement didn't have to be followed by that. So now I'm breaking the tie and I'm breaking the tie, I'm voting for Dr. Brandy Harrell. She's our new Mayor Pro Tim. So next up is discussion of meeting time. Uh, the meeting time currently now is at 6:00 PM. Any discussion on that, or do you want to change it? Do you want to leave it? Uh, it's up to you all. Again, I'm gonna just throw mine's out there, I like it at six o'clock. I think we can get in here, get business done, and we have to go into closed session. We still out here in ample time. You know, if you go back to seven, you gotta understand that, uh, we're pushing it back a little bit further and you're getting out here a little bit later. So those are my two cents.